Let there be light. You could darn near go with that as a theme for today's town meeting talk show. Good morning and welcome to it. Happy Friday. JR Lewis with you on KLAM and a very interesting conversation, I thought in any way is coming up, courtesy of Cordova Wireless Communications, the sponsor of this show. Why? Because it's a local show and they're your local cellphone and wireless data provider. It's very symbiotic and we appreciate the many years they've been aboard so we can do this. Your on-demand local talk program, kind of like a podcast before there were podcasts. And our guest today, in case you didn't hear any of the promotional announcements, is Nancy Clanton, who will be describing what she does and who she does it for with regard to community lighting. And she's actually one of two global lighting experts that spent last weekend looking at the lighting of various Cordova streets and public areas, buildings, the harbor, the school crosswalks around the community, actually measuring the lighting levels and visibility for safety, for efficiency, and visual quality. And the reason they're doing that is because it's time to replace some of the fixtures that are either changing color or going bad or just getting old for some reason. And next generation controllable lighting is an option. So rather than just always being at the same level and the same color, there are a bunch of things that they can do to modify how these look and how they light things, which can eliminate disruptions to humans as well as fish and animals, believe it or not, and actually provide better visual quality and safety while using less energy. There was a, not exactly a town meeting, but a seminar on this at the Science Center last Tuesday where Nancy and the other expert shared some examples of their work in Cordova and to start gaining some community feedback on an actual community approach to lighting because as we'll learn, there are ways that people can share their priorities and have input into some of these different parameters with when the lights are brighter, when the lights are dimmer, or what kind of lighting makes things safer, what kind of lighting makes things more comfortable. And there's some interesting, dare I say fun, things you can do with lights that you have the ability to change, not dramatically unlike some of these smart bulbs that some of us have. We have a bunch of them. I love them for using in our living area. But you know, you can get on the app and change the color and that type of technology along with other sensors and other things is becoming available for community lighting. So we're going to learn about that and also provide you some links on our YouTube version of this program in the description because of course all our talk shows go to the Cordova TV YouTube channel. If you go to YouTube and look for Cordova TV, you'll see it. So if you hear this and think, oh, you know, Uncle Fred would like to hear this, I'm gonna, you know, so you can, if you don't hear it when it's on the radio, you can have it on demand, again, a lot like a podcast on a universally useful platform like YouTube. So let's get into it here. Nancy Clanton and myself talking about a new potential generation of lighting for Cordova on today's town meeting brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications. So Nancy, let's start by learning some about you. Who do you work for and what's your background?
Well, JR, I'm a CEO of two different companies. One is Clanton Engineering and the other one is Visibility Innovations. And we are a lighting design electrical engineering firm that does a lot more than just design. We write criteria. We write criteria for energy standards. Department of Defense, we've written all of their lighting and electrical criteria. We also go and with GSA, we'll do post-occupancy evaluations. We'll go and figure out why buildings aren't working. Lot of research, interaction with universities, everything. And that's one reason why I think Cordova is amazing because you're like the perfect living lab for us.
Hmm, that might make some people nervous, but well, I'm sure we'll get into why they should be excited and not nervous. You're, we're going to experiment on you.
No, 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 no. It is, it is basically, and that was not my impression, it basically is you are so unique that if you can do it in Cordova, we can do it anywhere in the United States or even in the world. That's what's exciting about it.
So what is the concept then? What is it, what is it that you're trying to possibly implement or explore with us here?
Well, we were first called because we had done all the work in Anchorage back in 2008 on changing out the lighting to LED, street lighting. And when we went up there, we worked with the mayor's office and, and you know, Michael Barber and just going, what can we do? We've got to save all this energy. And we heard about this new technology. So we went in and did extensive studies. We brought Virginia Tech Transportation Institute up here and did the best studies we ever found on detection, on safety, how much light do you need? And our results were like, what? This doesn't make sense that you can lower lighting levels and the detection gets better on roadways. And that technology took off. So we wrote the guidelines for Anchorage on how to replace all their street lighting. And when I went down the Lower 48, they go, do you know, you're the first city in the United States to do this. And, and so basically what Cordova did is that they heard about these lights and they took the technology and just applied it to Cordova faster than Anchorage. So you are the first city in the United States to convert your lighting to LED. So you're at the beginning.
Now, what is it that we have on the light poles now? I thought they were LEDs. Is this different or do we not have LED at present?
You have LEDs, but remember that was when LEDs first came out and they have a lifetime. They're like 12, 15 years old. Yeah, we did this 2008. They're to the point they should be replaced. If you walk down, you'll see some of them turning yellow a little bit or, you know, they're degrading. And plus the technology has improved so much, you could even reduce the power more, have less glare. But in the last 12, 15 years, the street lighting has served you so well. So we're here to go, what's next? You know, if these start failing and some have, what do you replace them with or is it a new standard? And while we're here, we're going, we said, is there a, some areas where the community is nervous about, like school crossings? You know, because in the winter time in December, kids go to and from school and it's dark out. What do we do? How do we light the best for children and to be able to see them? So we went down and did all-night measurements and analysis. And yes, we can improve dramatically to increase the safety of crossings.
So when you talk about, you talk about this contact, this, this concept of detection. Now what, what is that, you know, how detection would be better? Is that, that sounds like a technical term for something.
It actually is how we see. Everyone thinks more light, better sight. We have found it's just the opposite. Contrast, contrast, contrast. That's how we see. That's what we can see in the moonlight and the moon shadows and everything, shadowing, contrast. Our eyes adapt to the lighting level we're, we're at, at the moment. And that is what we need to do. If you blast an area of light, when you drive out of it, you go, oh, I gotta adapt to the lower light level. It's like walking into a movie theater. You go, oh, I can't see for a while. Takes me a while to adapt. So that's what I mean. We need really great contrast. Whatever you're seeing an object, it's gotta be behind something you can see it.
And so the idea then is it sort of levels or normalizes, you know, if you look from a place that is lit a little more to a place that's lit a little bit less, you don't have as much transition time for your eyes to adapt?
Transition, that is it. And it's even more effective by people as we get older, the elderly, the low-vision people, their transition time is extended. So we have to make sure that the number one thing to ruin transition is glare. If you can see the light source, it's wasted light. It's coming to your eye and not designing or not going where it's supposed to be doing. You should light with purpose, useful lighting, not wasted light. Get rid of the glare, number one, no glare.
You talked about too, the, you know, for example, safety of kids, which is obviously a huge deal in any community, but is very, very important to us. Is there, if you put in a series of these lights, these newer lights, are you able to light different zones differently for different applications or is it a, do all of the poles or all of the different lights need to behave the same?
We should do different zones for different applications. So what you have is like a grade school may have slightly different lighting, you know, the poles may be a little bit lower. And the other thing, when you think of a crosswalk, you don't want the light right at the crosswalk because the light comes in, goes off the top of your head. You can't see the face. What criteria is you should be eight to 10 feet between the driver and the crosswalk so the light hits the person in the crosswalk. That way you get full lighting. And to make sure that it's not designed like in a grade school, not designed for people who are, you know, over five feet tall, it could be three or four feet. And to really model it so that you pick up the children going across. But yes, it's the height of the pole, the contrast, making sure that they're lighted in plenty of time for a driver coming down, they see the kids in the crosswalk.
Okay, so we, we've talked about the obvious, the energy savings. And I mean, have you, in, in doing the study of Cordova specifically, have you found that that's going to be substantial if we go to different fixtures?
Yes, it'll be substantial, but what we noticed in Cordova, what's missing are controls. We were out at midnight and one in the morning, we saw nobody on the streets. Everyone, and I don't want to pick on, you know, people with private properties, why's your outdoor lighting on? Why are all the streetlights on 100%? Nobody is there. It should be activity activated and that's very common now. I mean, like I mentioned, the Department of Defense, they go, no activity after 10 minutes, all the lights need to be dimmed by 30%, period. And this is defense. And you can do that now. That's where the controls and where the, the equipment is so advanced and it doesn't cost any money. I mean, it's the same compared to what the lights were way back then. It's outstanding quality and you get the control capability. So that's what I think you could really save in Cordova is to introduce some control strategies.
Can, can these, can these lights detect activity autonomously or do they have to be sort of set like on a timer? For example, we do a study of where people move around and when we find out, well, this is a low traffic period, so the light should be low. Or can, can they, you know, kind of like traffic lights, which of course we don't have any of, but you know, a lot of them, for quite a while, have had a censoring mechanism of some kind where they'll stay green on a main thorough, you know, a main road, but then if somebody pulls up on a side road, it switches. Is it, is it like that? Can it detect activity and respond automatically or do you have to set certain time windows?
Yes to both. Either way, JR, you're good at this. We'll just hire you to do it.
I've been around.
The, the camera technology, or I should say the motion technology. People don't like cameras, like, don't see me. No, we can just detect if it's a moose or a person, the differences in what that is. It's all there. So if nobody is there, or to be simple, you know, citywide, 10 o'clock at night, could you please lower? I mean, like you do with your sound ordinance from 10 to six in the morning. How about the same with lighting? Could you please turn off your lights or shield it so that's not coming in my window? In our survey, we saw many of the residential houses from some of the streetlights, like at these crossings, you know, kids aren't out there at midnight, but the lights are on full blast. You're about 10 times the light trespass value. You should be, some houses just are blasted with light and that's inexcusable. You could dim it, you could, again, someone comes up to the crosswalk, the lights could increase, not a problem. The technology is there. So yes, it's a combination. You could do maybe citywide, dim all the lights and you do a slow dim so no one even notices. It just, over 10 minutes, it dims, no one will notice and the energy you will save is enormous.
Well, and I would imagine too, I mean, I've got basic smart bulbs in my house that, you know, that, that can respond, say, when it's sunset. So, you know, it can detect when sunset is, when sunrise is and respond automatically that way. And then again, you've got, you see, this is, what's intriguing about this too, is in the past, I would imagine a lot of times if you wanted to change the way a light functions and somebody actually had to go out to the pole and fiddle with it. And now you have some sort of central control, I guess?
Central control or it can ping, it can do local, you know, control too. There's so many different ways. I know in, in Anchorage and in Pueblo, Colorado, I know that the law enforcement were really interested about these controls because they said, if we have an incident in a house, we want to darken our position. And usually they have to shoot out the lights. I mean, that's what they say, gotta shoot them out. I said, okay, take your earphone or your iPad and say, turn off all lights within 1,000 feet of my position. And they all went out. They went, how fast can we get this in? That we have control of it. So it's sometimes darkness is a good thing or you want to increase it. People keep thinking, well, for security lighting, blah, we need all this light. Actually, people breaking in need light to see, but if the lights came on when somebody approached your building, then the cameras would go, oh, what's going on here? So it actually could help activate or notify you of activity. So that's a good thing.
And, you know, anytime you talk about, say, app control of a, of a public thing like that, the question of hackability or, you know, are you going to be able to be sure that it's only authorized personnel? I assume your security is pretty good then?
Yes, and what you do, and again, with the military, we have to have the control system completely separate from anything else in the military. It's a separate gateway or separate ping to the cloud, whatever, totally separate system. And there's no reason for people, I mean, there's no access points for this system. Or like I said, you could have it localized. Each light could work independently. You know, it's within the light itself, has nothing to do, but then you couldn't arrange things, you know, as a community-wide.
Sure. Okay, so energy savings, being able to light the community zone by zone based on need, maybe have it respond to motion, you know, kind of like a lot of us have motion tracking lights where somebody approaches your door, the light pops on, something similar like that. So a lot of these things have been incorporated. Are there some other benefits or facets to this upgrade that, that you have been sharing? There's that webinar, for example, which if we have a link to that, that we'll put in the description of the online version of this and, and mention at the close of the program. But what are, what are some other components of this project that might be of interest to the public?
Well, what we've noticed, we are taking the five principles of responsible lighting at night and we present it in our webinar. We basically said first, only light when needed, you know, it's kind of white. If no one's there, you don't need it, turn off the lights. Or only light areas you need, like instead of you need to light the sidewalk or the street, light that, but don't light the harbor or, I mean, don't light the water, whatever. Only put light where you need it. Also distributions of light are amazing now with LEDs. You can have one pole and it can light 200 feet in each direction, long and skinny along a path. So the right distribution so that your lighting and your distribution is what you need. Second thing, just get rid of the glare. Glare hurts us. We can't see, it's like headlights coming at you in the night, you go, oh, how do I can't see in the road? If you can't see the light source, then it looks beautiful. And that's what the community could do is to look at that. And then the other thing, like we talked about, controls, 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 make sure you've got it. But the final thing, it's the color of light. Because what we did in our seminar, we showed every species on the earth, whether it's birds, moose, salmon, they all have sensitivity to different wavelengths of light, different colors of light. Right now, moose cannot see red light. That's why hunters can wear bright orange and red. You look black to them, but blue jeans are like, meon! And so doing it, and like the Department of Defense, they go, you need monochromatic light, amber light, or the marine for the harbor so it doesn't affect the fish at all. They do not even know there's light there. And it's kind of like in the daytime, you have sunshine or, you know, hopefully blue sky and the light hits the bottom part of your retina and you need that to stimulate your serotonin. At night, we want that to go down so the sun sets and it's red coming through, it kind of tells you, move to red light. And it has to hit the top part of the retina like old firelight. And that's the way we are as humans. That's why all your phones should be on light shift or night shift or your screens, that blue light hurts every species on this earth. And so that whole nighttime thing to be able to sleep produce melatonin. Melatonin is produced, our night, our sleeping agent by absence of blue light. So that's the other thing. We can change and with technology, we can change the color of light. Like if it's bird migration season, change the color of light or salmon. So it could actually help in the industry, give us plenty of light to see, but it's not going to affect nature. It's not going to affect your industry. So that's something else we talked about into how the new lighting can be responsive to the needs of Cordova.
Hmm, yeah, that's interesting because we always, you know, I mean, there's been a lot of talk about light pollution, you know, the, the wasted, the excess light going in directions where you don't want it. But the idea of changing the, the tone of it or the, whatever the right word is, to be responsive to these different times of year is interesting too. What about, say, is, is there any, for, for folks that maybe have seasonal affective disorder issues, is, can it extend to that too? You know, make it seem less dreary when people are outside in the dark times of year?
Yes, and with seasonal affective disorder, you actually are missing the blue light in the morning. From nine to 11 is the most important time for you to get that blue light in the bottom part of your retina. So they give you daylight lamps, but then turn off the daylight lamps as you do the evening wind down. Have all your lighting go to warm, incandescent candlelight type of spectrum. Don't keep those daylight lamps going because then you're messing up your entire circadian cycle.
So is there any way that these, these new light poles, for example, or these new light fixtures could contribute to that or is that still really in the realm of something that a person would need to do personally in their own environment?
Both.
Okay.
The new light fixtures could actually, in December, you know, with the maximum now hours of darkness, you could increase the blue contribution in the morning and then as you wind down, whenever that is, to go to a warmer light. Most of the time, the warmer light for outdoor lighting is going to be the most important because of nature. Nature is geared around daylight. Seasonal affective disorder, I would say, it's your interior lighting to make sure that you've got it tuned and you're dosing yourself correctly in your interior lighting. Just think of the sunset.
Right. So back to, back to the fixtures and their different capabilities. Did we cover, you said there were these five different things? Did we get them all?
Yeah.
I forget. Okay, good.
Kind of, yeah, close enough, close enough.
Well, then I want to, I want to ask something fun because Clay, when, when he was first talking about this, you know, sort of pie in the sky-ish a while back, he talked about applications, for example, for emergencies, that there might be ways for the community lighting to say in a tsunami to, I don't know if it would change color or blink or, you know, what, what are the possibilities there?
Anything. In fact, that's very, very common is to have the streetlights be your visual signal. If the community knows, if during the day, the lights are blinking, what? What's going on? It's daytime. Well, tsunami's coming in and you could send any signal that you want and let the community know, like a long flash and short. Maybe that's a tsunami or a color of light that comes out of the light during the day. You can, again, if we change colors, we have that opportunity, it could be used to signal the community, definitely.
That's great. And what about, can they, can they be set for emergencies, say, to the intensity or say near intensity of a strobe? Because I know, you know, when we light towers, for example, if you've got a great big tower, you have your red lights at the top, like we have on our little tower. It used to be, I don't know if it still is, but it used to be that, that big towers were supposed to have strobes on them during the day to warn aircraft not to hit them. Do these fixtures go to that level so they could pulse real quick, maybe at, at that level of intensity to catch somebody's attention?
You could, but you don't want it to pulse to the point that it's going to affect somebody. Sometimes pulsing will set off a epidemic, you know, seizure.
Sure, sure.
There is, it's a certain frequency you cannot get in. And again, doing this from memory, I think it's like from seven to 14 hertz pulsing that it could set off a seizure. So you have to be careful to be all that. I just think a steady blink, it may be an unusual pattern in it.
Yeah.
That will catch close. And it could be a red and the reason why towers have red, you remember I told you birds and animals, they don't see red light.
Right.
So that's why it's red, but we can see it.
Sure.
And it doesn't affect them.
Okay.
But yeah, we, we have done a lot of work with radio towers in sensitive bird migration areas on the East Coast of the United States in looking at this. So yeah, there's, technology is there, how to do it.
All right. So being able to do emergency patterns that, that could say, hey, it's time to move to higher ground, it's too big. If you had a great big row of them, like you did on a runway, you could point people right up the hill to the evacuation center, I suppose. I don't know, you gotta have a lot of them to do that. But the other question is, when we have like the Christmas parade, could you, could you like make them electrical parade kind of fun, you know, for, for, or are they, is that really, no, this is a public safety thing, we can't do that, you know, that sort of stuff?
You can do it. You can do it with Christmas lights, everything, you can do it.
Wow.
It's going to be beautiful. I want to come up here and watch it. You'll have to send me some, some links to it.
Yeah.
But that's what it is. But that's what it is. So how do we get downtown to be inviting? And right now, we measured the downtown levels. You are spot on with the amount of light, very little light trespass. I mean, that the city lights are great, or I should say the utility lights. I'm still trying to figure out who owns what. Coming down the hill and seeing this inviting city. So last night during our community meeting, we kind of asked people to prioritize or what's important to people in Cordova. And we said, is it safety lighting? Is it lighting for, you know, less harmful to the environment? Is it saving energy? Is it light shining in my window from a neighbor or whatever? You know, what are those issues that are important to Cordova? And everyone started ranking them. And then one person said, they're all important. Everyone said, it's a win-win. You can design lighting to meet all these criteria.
Hmm.
So that, that would be wonderful to help Cordova do that. And to get the citizen involved in community lighting. And we, we can set up little demonstrations and go, come and look at it. What's your favorite?
Yeah.
And that's when I say living lab, it is like bringing lighting technology here and have Cordova decide, the citizens of what they like the best.
So what kind of a timetable is there? I mean, is, is the decision already been made to implement these or it's still in a planning stage or where is it at? Where is it headed?
I don't think a decision has been made and that's why we were brought here. Because of our work in Anchorage and it was our original lights that were brought to Cordova. Um, and I think that's why Clay invited us to come down and to look at it. And also to just look at your generation. If we can reduce our nighttime load, you're, and again, I'm not the utility person, but your energy bills could go way down.
Hmm.
By not having to pay for that diesel. Every light in your house right now is being run off of diesel or a lot of it going, what can you do as a citizen to help the city reduce their costs?
Yeah.
So it, it's a, it's a, it's a collaboration.
Well, and I like the fact that it, the-
Best friendly.
As you describe, you know, the fact that it's adaptable too, you know, that you can, if the decision is made to go forward with it, then you can, uh, you know, you can tinker with it and fiddle with it and fine tune it and, and people can continue to provide input. And of course, like everything where it's a community decision, not necessarily everything can be implemented, but you know, there can be a consensus and, and, uh, uh, you know, it, it just, it's, having the ability to change it, I think, and to modify is, is really fascinating. And then if I heard you right, the, you know, obviously when you do something like this, there's some expense, but that gets recouped through energy savings over time?
Absolutely. Your energy savings are going to be tremendous by reducing the lighting. And, and yes, it's a community thing, but it's also neighbor to neighbor. It's citizens being aware that one in the morning, my lights are on. What if they're not on? It's okay. But if someone comes up to the house, the light, it's good, come on. It may notify me, hey, somebody's here.
Yeah.
Use it and you're going to reduce the energy. It's operating, they gotta do a generation for it in the winter time.
Yeah.
Very expensive.
Well, what, uh, is there anything else needed from the community at this point as far as interacting with CEC? Or is CEC or the city going to be approaching the community when it's time to make decisions? Uh, or is, is that not really in your wheelhouse and more of a Clay question?
It's a Clay question and yet I feel there's a total openness with CEC in learning about this. Um, they just feel that they are be, they're knowing more about lighting. Clay came out with us every night and did the measurements. He went, wow, I had no idea of how important, how you do the measure and we'll be writing a, a report on what we found. And his knowledge just skyrocketed.
Yeah.
With what it is. So you've got someone now who understands what we're doing, what to do with it. I would say the community, the more they can listen to this broadcast, if they listened to the webinar last night, um, we'll be back, we'll definitely be back. And setting up, and I would love it for the community to get involved. And where could our demonstration be? It could be a residential area. It could be downtown. It could be, um, down by the harbor. Where could we set something up and have the community come down and say, I like that, I don't like that. You know, in other words, it just thinks, then that way the community is involved in your lighting and what is needed. And definitely law enforcement. They are our best advocates for the best lighting because they don't like glare either.
Yeah. Well, then, and so to kind of recap, the fixtures are aging out. Some of them don't work. Uh, the replacements need to be made anyway. Cause I mean, anytime you talk about a project like this, there're going to be voices that are saying, hey, you know, budget, we don't need to be spending money on something that, you know, some new fancy just because it's new and fancy. It's this, we're talking about hardware that is now old and failing and in some cases and, and needs to be replaced. You mentioned, if I said before, that the smarter, since that's the term we laypeople understand, the smarter fixtures are about the same as what the old ones were in price. Did I hear that right?
They're even cheaper now.
Yeah. And they do a bunch more.
14 years, yeah.
Yeah. And they, and they do a whole bunch more. They offer a lot of possibilities. So anybody that has any questions, probably at this point, it'd be best to direct them to CEC if they, they want to know more about what's next, what's ahead?
Absolutely. And like I said, just listening to the community and every person we've met in this community is so interested in what we're doing. They're just, you know, from the hotel clerk to the bartender to wherever, they're going, wow, and this would be important to me to start gathering community feelings about your lighting and to look at, you know, take it from the prioritization. How would you prioritize it? Are they all important? In other words, just some conversation with the community. Um, is it light shining in my window? Oh, my neighbor, oh, why do they have their lights on all the time? You know, it's right by bedroom window and, but they want security lighting, you know, communication and say, would you like me to put up a light shining in your bedroom window? I mean, that's kind of neighbor to neighbor.
Yeah, yeah.
But say, we do sound, like I mentioned, can we do with light? And oh, and look at all the energy we're saving.
Yeah. Well, that's a big, that's a big plus, you know, with the, with people wanting to move away from fossil fuels in general, and then more specifically to Cordova to minimize the use of diesel as much as possible because of the direct impact that you see there. Uh, I imagine there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of curiosity. So as far as a timeline, then again, is that more of a Clay question or, or would you be able to guess, you know, when we might actually, if things sort of went as hoped, when we might actually see some of this stuff installed?
I would say it's a Clay question, um, because funding's important, the payback, what the design is, all of that. We came here just to observe.
Yeah.
And take measurements to kind of get a feeling of what the visibility issues are, what can be done. Design hasn't happened, but of course up in my mind, I'm just like, wow, wake up in the middle of the night, oh, we could do this, we could do that.
Yeah.
Wow, you know, the harbor lighting, oh, we could really make it glowy.
Hey, if I DJ'd a rave on Main Street, you know, everything could be purple, green, blue, blah. You know, of course I'd rather be boiled in my own pudding than do that anyway, but you know, still.
But in, in, and again, a great examples.
Yeah.
You know, like the electric fishermen, the way they light their building is an example of inviting. You can't see the light source, the entry's there, it's beautiful, you know, go and really celebrate. Good examples. And can all the other merchants do what they're doing?
Hmm.
Um, I, I hate pointing out that's bad, that's, I want to go what's good in Cordova.
Sure, sure.
And use as examples, can we all do this?
Well, I really appreciate the time, uh, Nancy. It's been fascinating and, and you did more, of course, than just take measurements. You know, you provide a, a look at the possibilities and stimulate inspiration, hopefully. I, I find it all fascinating. Um, I mean, just within, within our home, doing some of the things we've done with, with color changing bulbs and being able to create environments that, like you said, help, help set the tone. So when you want to go to sleep, when it's, when it's time to wind down, you can tell your, you know, your gadget, uh, to, to set that, that, uh, mood or that, that combination of lights and, and you really do, you, you notice it's, it's a big deal. So, uh, there, it's fascinating possibilities and, and I really appreciate you taking the time to visit with us, help us learn more about it.
Well, you're welcome, JR. And we're here. I love this community.
Yeah.
I have never been to more friendly, more helping, more open community in my life. This is a golden place right here. So we're here to help no matter what.
Sounds good. Well, thank you again.
Ask me anything.
Thank you again so much and, uh, we hope you, we sure hope you enjoy the rest of So very much thanks to Nancy Clanton of Clanton Associates, whose recent visit to Cordova has got a lot of people thinking about the potential. And something, you know, that she really encouraged, we, we talked some after we finished our, our recorded conversation, is she really encouraged people to, you know, in, in terms of thinking about this, to just kind of walk around town and look at how bright lights are in a certain place or the tone of them. Are they really glaring or are they really shrill or is it too bright or not bright enough? Or just kind of take all that in and be ready to share it when CEC reaches out to get more community input. It's funny, I was talking, I wish I'd thought about this while we were rolling, but you know, I was talking to her about how we've had fun kind of modeling some of the lighting schemes we do, say, in our, in our bedroom after color combinations that Disney has used to light different attractions that we've enjoyed over the years. Or, you know, like one of my favorites is the, uh, the evening ambiance they do at the Mexico Pavilion in Epcot. And there's a, you know, a combination of reds and oranges and purples and flame effects and that sort of thing that when we redid all the lighting in our room, we, we actually tried to recreate that and it actually is, is very cool. And it does a, a lot of what she said, you know, it, it, it does something to your brain that says, okay, now we're in this lighting configuration, so it's time to cool down and relax and, uh, you know, have everything slow down for sleep. And, um, you know, you think about being able to do that kind of thing on a community wide level and set your lights in a way that can actually improve mood, maybe while people are walking around town or driving to or from work, or who knows what the possibilities are. That's the fun thing about being able to change them, as she described, is let people share ideas and see what you come up with. I still think it'd be very cool to see if they could be incorporated into the Christmas parade too. Wouldn't help so much at ice worm because that's during the day, but who knows? Who knows? It was a fun conversation. If you have any follow-up questions, again, reach out to Cordova Electric Cooperative. As Nancy said, that's really the place to do it, but they're going to be back, uh, and we hope to get a chance to visit with them again and see how this progresses. Let me point out too, we're hoping to have another talk show pretty soon with the Cordova Chamber of Commerce. They've got a number of things coming up here, not the least of which is Shorebird. And now is the time to be thinking if you want to be a participant in that as a sponsor or volunteer, any of that sort of thing. And then also, uh, another one of these business summit events. I, I haven't seen the notes yet, so, uh, I don't know a whole lot in advance, but you can go to the Chamber website to get an idea of it. And so we're hoping, I'm hoping to have that conversation with the Chamber soon and then we'll play that for you here also. Show sponsored by Cordova Wireless Communications, local in every sense of the word. Not to mention the millions of dollars that their type of business, working with, with CTC, they get all this outside money that comes in and we don't have to do anything. We don't have to harvest anything. We just have to be customers, member owners. And Cordova Wireless has been a sponsor for many years of this opportunity for us to share information with you. So we're glad to have them for it. All the special programming to which you are entitled in the 10 a.m. hour is coming up and we will see you next time before too much longer, actually, for the next town meeting on KLAM. Thanks for tuning in.